Thank you, have a seat. Next item roll call?
Anthony Lipsansky.
Here.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone will be absent. Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Alderman.
Here.
Let's see where are we? Jason Donahue.
Here.
Mason Smolinak.
Here.
Julia Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Christage.
Present.
Next item, approval of the minutes of the public workshop meeting held on September 7th of 2023, and a regular public meeting held on September 21st.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Hall. You get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, moving on to hearing a person's present.
Well, now, now we need to.
Tell us your secrets.
Okay.
Okay, you'll have to.
You have to come to the microphone, please. State your name and address for the record. No.
We can hear you.
If you project more.
Yes, just project.
Use your outdoor voice.
There you go.
I'm Holly Defior. Um, what did you say, address? Um, 4145 Park Avenue, Sladington.
While you're here.
Um, I'm here because I was informed about, um, the butterfly garden on, where is it? On Canal Street. And I thought it would be a good idea so that I could get it done. And for my Eagle project.
Wow. Nice, great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe the mayor is the lead, you're the lead on this, or you're not?
Yes, sir. I thought so, maybe you did it. He stopped her already, so.
Oh, you did it already?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So you'd be doing a whole second station, or you'd be building on what's already in existence?
It'd be a whole new one.
A whole new one. Great.
You have location for that second?
Not yet.
All right.
No, I think we're gonna go look for a spot.
All right.
And when is your project supposed to start? Next, next year, like?
Springtime?
Springtime, yeah, yeah.
Do you have a completion for your Eagle project, has to be done by this same calendar year?
Yes. Uh, no, no, before you.
Do you have a plan, a timeframe plan, though, that, you know, that it's not gonna kind of linger? It'll be started and kind of get, get done? Yeah, good. Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
Under President's report, I have nothing. Moving on to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Counsel and President. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Penn Doc for coming in and taking care of some of the roadway on 21st Street North. Senator Nick Miller, I know a little fire under them, so thank you, Senator, also, for getting them there. Uh, it was temporary, from what I understand, but it did take care of a good deal of the Baja-like terrain we have up there coming up Main Street, so thank you for that. Uh, secondly, uh, the Hometown Heroes banners are in the last 74. I had a conversation with Greg Mori today, and we are looking to start on October 30th due to a lack of a bucket truck before that time. So for the week of the 30th, and then the following week up to November 8th, we'll make sure every banner is up for Veterans Day, so we can celebrate all 407 entries and everyone who's shown their patriotic love of our veterans in town. So that'll be starting October 30th. We'll start from there. Uh, tomorrow, the governor from the Borgenland in Germany is here visiting us. He will be at the Sumet Museum with his entourage, starting at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Pannie will be hosting that part of it. I will be visiting also and spending time with them. So if you'd like to meet the governor of the Borgenland, who we have our sister city relationship with, please stop by. Be glad to meet him.
Is that tomorrow or Friday?
I'm sorry, Friday, I keep thinking it's Thursday. Condition after all these years, I'm sure. And lastly, uh, for Ms. Holly, uh, thank you for stepping up with this. I'll look forward to working with you, and I encourage council to accept, uh, this request. Uh, if you read the letter thoroughly, it's, uh, very ambitious and a really nice addition to what we already have going. And once we get this moving ahead, time after time, uh, we're gonna get to that beautification of our canal pathway. So, uh, you have my contact, and I look forward to working with you, uh, hopefully when everything's passed. So that's all I have, Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And Solicitor's report?
Uh, just that we had an executive session immediately prior to the start of this meeting, and it was to discuss personnel matters. Other than that, I would just ask council members if there are any questions? Not hearing anything, we're good, thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got other reports from committee, starting with Mr. Hall. Because before I get into that, I'll need someone to read Trevor's. Okay, Judy. Okay. Starting with Mr. Hall.
Okay. Uh, we are receipt of a check of, in the amount of $40,194 from Keystone Municipal Insurance Trust. This is a dividend distribution for our workers' compensation provider. We are receipt of a check for $3,861.49. This is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the public utility realty tax funding. And on Tuesday, October 10th, Mr. Broke participated in a virtual meeting at the River Central's, uh, steering committee. The committee agreed to prepare the request for a proposal to the update of the individual municipalities zoning ordinance. This also worked, and they also worked on a draft agreement. We received a check for Northampton County, from the County of Northampton, in the amount of $1,500, and this is a portion of our 2021-22 hotel tax grant. And Mr. Edward Pannie also reports a number of tours that were provided for various individuals and groups, including students from the University of Pennsylvania, which included two young ladies from China and one young man from Taiwan, in the report.
Thank you. Building land recreation, Ms. Alderman?
Thank you. Enclosed in your packet is a notice of the Celebrate Our Hometown Heroes. The event is scheduled for Sunday, November 12th, at 2:00 p.m. in the Northampton area high school auditorium. The event is sponsored by the Northampton area Historical Society. Also in your packet is a letter from Team Paw prints. They're suggesting that they expand their area of operation for next year's event to include the hardball field south of the softball field. Mr. Brokes does not anticipate any problems or concerns. Mr. Brokes is looking for the Christmas tree for our annual tree lighting ceremony. So anybody out there that has a tree that they would like to give us, we would be very appreciative of that. Um, and there are still seats available for council participation in the Jack Frost Parade, scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, October 19th. End of report.
And code and police, Ms. Alderman?
The zoning hearing board met on Thursday, October 12th, to hear the appeal of YRC Real Estate LLC. They were seeking a variance on coverage and off-street parking. The board denied their request. End of report.
Thank you. Our health, Ms. Mrs. Almond?
Thank you. Enclosed in our packet is the health officer's report and the minutes from the September 26th meeting. Including in that, they had discussed the weeds and responsibility of the homeowner to maintain. One of the concerns was use of toxic weed killers. A suggestion of the non-toxic weed killer was offered, and the natural recipe consists of household products and can be found on the borough website if you are interested. Also discussed, some of the highlights from the health officer's report from the month of May through September were 24 license renewals. The farmer's market, that is headed by Pat Knupf, who does an excellent job coordinating the market, had ended on September 26th. And there's no new information regarding the Saps Restaurant, who, um, just recently closed and will be moving out of Cherry Square. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works in Sur, Mr. Glassick?
Thank you. A paving project continues with Ash Alley, which is scheduled to be totaled makeover. I don't have a date on that. On Friday, October 20th, Mr. Brokes will be attending the hazard mitigation meeting in Citronia ambulance building. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission sponsors this event and mandates that at least one borough representative attends the event of a declared emergency, and the borough would not be eligible for any funding if he did, if we did not. End of report.
Thank you. Under new business, unfinished business, there's none? New business? Consider request for an Eagle Scout project.
We have received a request from Holly De Four, Defior? Defior, I wanted to pronounce your name right. To construct a Monarch Butterfly Waystation along Canal Street Park. This constitutes her Eagle Scout project and is seeking council's permission to continue. She is available if there are any additional questions.
What is the opinion of council?
I'll make a motion to allow or proceed.
Motion made by Ms. Alderman, do I have a second?
Second. Okay, Ms. Almond.
Which, Ms. Almond?
Yeah, it's fine.
BA.
Ms. Almond? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, question. Um, the mayor, you noted that there was a letter in here, and I did not find it. Was it in previous meetings?
No.
It wasn't in.
I'm not sure if I missed. Do you have it?
Did you find it?
Oh, there it is. Okay, it was stuck to the other one, I have it, thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions then?
I'm having a little bit of a question. This is really a good project, and I'm supportive of it. However, when we start developing all of this along the canal, who's gonna maintain it?
Well, we've been looking at scout troops, which have been maintaining it now. In fact, I want to give a shout out to Shaw Pageant, uh, Cut Pack 99, who's been doing the weeding and everything at, uh, the Reverend. So they are participating in this, uh, working with Regina councilmen to get the volunteers clubs. There's a, uh, I believe, a biology class at high school who's interested in doing that, and the Reverend Marais is working on his garden club also. So it's only gonna meet, uh, require pruning and trimming back, for the most part.
Oh, okay.
It's not required.
Thought was, these are all really great ideas, and, uh...
And Laurie Metz is coordinating the timing to trim back and things like that, and it's just, all you need is a pruning shears for this project.
I've seen with Kathy Novogratz in the community garden, she started out with 15, 16 volunteers, and now she's done to, she's doing the weeds.
Sure.
So it was just food for thought.
Yes.
Uh, volunteers are hard to come by.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah, I really support the project. It's just, my question is, who will maintain it?
I'll make sure we get the people in line.
Another one more question, if I may?
Yes.
We're still open. If I could ask Holly, uh, I know there's gonna have to be some fundraising that you'll have to come up with. Would you please keep us informed as you need that and go forward? That we can help as council to support that, 'cause I see where you have a bench and the stepping stones and things like that. Those things are not cheap, so to support our town, I appreciate that, and we want to be part of it, so thank you.
Comment?
Comment?
Uh, over the last weekend, I was down in McCundee to watch the trains. And down there, in their pavilion, along the tracks, it was beautiful. It was jaw-dropping. The flowers, the pathway, the benches. I think that would be something that I wish we would attempt to duplicate here with butterflies and the other situations that we have with the different type of plantings. I mean, it is, it is really an odd drop experience when you go down there, 'cause I never expected it to look like that.
Is that the one right at the railroad tracks, Tony? Will you cross over? Oh, that's beautiful.
Yeah.
The fountain-like area?
Yep, there's a fountain there.
That is gorgeous.
They have benches and everything there. It's really beautiful. I was gonna take some pictures, but I didn't have a suitable camera to, uh, do the job. But I mean, if someone, if you wanna go down and look, you're, you're good with the camera. Go down and snap some photos. I mean, it's a, yeah, it's a half a day's ride by camel to get down there.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay.
But, uh, it's really, I think, worth what you would be bringing back, even just to, to duplicate a percentage of what they've done and the types of flowers and everything. That would really accent the parkway along with the butterflies and everything else.
Also, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Consider the request of the Lehigh Valley Community Benefit.
We have received a request from the Lehigh Valley Community Benefit Committee to conduct the 13th Annual Tucker's Toy Run on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, with a rain date of Sunday, November 5th, 2023. The ride begins at 12:00 p.m. and leaves Tri-Borough Sportsman's Club, proceeds south on Canal Street, turning left on Lobach Avenue, north along Lobach Avenue to Route 329, where they'll make a right and leave the borough. Uh, their itinerary for the full ride is, is listed on their request.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
By Mr. Lipsansky, second?
Second with a question.
Second?
Yes.
By Mr. Glassick?
Yeah.
Okay, question?
Question, uh, Mr. Hall, did they have fire police request it?
They, yeah, I knew about it for.
Okay, I figured you would.
It's, uh, and we've been doing it for years.
Yeah, that's all.
It's the same day as our, let's put news out there, as the basket thing goes, but we'll, we'll get guys prepared, we'll be.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the request to conduct a shredding event.
We have received a request from the Office of State Representative Zach Mako to conduct a shredding event on Saturday, April 20th, 2024. As in past years, the, the event will be conducted on the parking lot of the community center from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon.
What is the opinion of council?
Make a motion? Second?
Motion by Mr. Glassick, second, by Mr. Lipsansky, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request to replace parking meters?
Uh, Councilman Lipsansky has received a request to replace the parking meters on Main Street between Kinkle Court and Richard Paul Alley. They used to be there, then council voted to remove them, and, uh, some of the, uh, people in the neighborhood are, or some of the businesses in the neighborhood are struggling because cars never move.
What businesses are there?
What?
What businesses in that area?
Barber shops, haircuts, uh, the, uh...
Knife shop?
Yeah. There's a vast number that have been there and have come back. And I know that the park patrons of the places that are in that area have a hard time finding place to park there, to go into the different businesses that are there. Uh, so I think that, uh, we can accommodate some type of movement of the vehicles on the street. You know, after 6 o'clock, that's, that's wonderful, that's when the parking meters go off of effect. But during the day, if you're gonna be. But during the day, if you're going to be parking there, and some people park there, you know what I mean, that a dog can have a birthday. So I, I think it would be not only beneficial for the businesses that would be there and it would give additional assistance to the police department to solve some problems and situations that occur there. And I'd like to compliment the chief on the placement of his flashing speeding zone machine. It's very nice. People see it. And you also notice that on a lot of the cars that are going north on Main Street, the factories have him put in brake lights and brakes and they slow down. So it's, it's a very ineffective, it is a very effective, he tried to say in English, program, and I, I think it's a, a good idea.
Okay. So you have a motion to replace the parking meters?
Motion.
Let me, Mr. Lipsansky, do I have a second?
If I may chime in here for a moment?
Okay.
It, it's, it sounds like a great plan. But from my legal perspective, I, I would just want to see some numbers come out. So my suggestion to the councilman, if he's willing to hear it, would be that the motion be to either table or just reschedule it for another meeting so we could maybe explore the numbers and maybe see if we want to do it in like sections or however we want to do it. It's something that's worth pursuing. It's just, let's, let's get some more information on the actual dollars and cents that way we can do it that way. Would that be acceptable with the councilman?
I would change my motion to copy what the solicitor just had programmed.
So my suggestion would be to, for, excuse me, to table this, that way we could get some numbers.
Yep. If I may, oh, go ahead, Ms. Haldeman.
No, go, go ahead. I, I just, I don't think I understand. I just wanted more clarity and that, that you want numbers for what?
For the actual, how much it would cost, because not only do like the parking meters themselves cost a chunk of money,
that's what, okay.
but it's also going to cost, you're going to have to re-cement all the sidewalks and I, I mean, I'm a lawyer, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if that's something that you can just carve a hole out and then pull out or if it's like a whole replacement of the entire cement block.
Correct.
So it's just something we want to look into.
The councilman, in front of writing, they put three fifteen-minute signs a few years ago and a little part of that.
Yeah.
So that's, that was the compromise, I believe, at that time that you made.
They had that in front of the dry cleaner, I believe, too.
Yeah.
Just a question, how much do we get from parker, parking meters now, Leroy, roughly?
So it's on your police report?
Uh, annually, somewhere around ten thousand dollars.
A year?
Yep.
And for that, for how many, roughly?
Two.
Just a ballpark? Couple hundred?
No.
No, okay.
Eighty, eighty to a hundred.
And how many are we looking for this, if you, if you would, how many possibly?
That, I believe, would be in the area of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, all right. Just to get a ballpark, as Ms. Haldeman said, I'd like to have some numbers and just see things. So thank you, solicitor, for suggesting that.
Yeah, it's a great idea. We just, let's get the dollars for it.
We're making ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, each month with your police report, the body brought in by leaders, did you see that?
I've seen it there on times, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I make, do I have a motion to table?
I think we had a motion.
Okay, we had a motion. Now what do we have to do?
We need a second.
Second.
Second to table.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from council members, starting with Mr. Hall.
Uh, thank you. I agree. It was quite a surprise with the Main Street, the northern part of Main Street. I purposely stay off that street, you know, always look up in that water, stay off that street for, you know, not to get your dentures in, you know, your, your fillings rattled and everything else going up that, it's a lot more, more smooth. It's not perfect, but it's a lot better than it's been for five years, eight years. Mr. Pizinski, I'm sure would be impressed in, and that was something he brought up every, every council meeting. Other than that, um, we did have some police presence. I saw, I thanked the chief up on Station Alley, the person who was in here last week, pardon my forgetting his name, with his portable speed bump. But that was, they slowed down a few, but I don't know if you want to have him where he had today because it probably, where he was parked, you just basically could see him from every aspect or whatever, so I don't know. Maybe it was somebody different. My wife just said she came through and said, but it might be a point of, I don't know placement, how you know better as to where they can park and actually do what they got to do up in there right now, but but that's helping to slowing down some of the, you know, instead of being ongoing with them working on the bridge and the wires and everything else that they're doing there, it's lined up on the Whitehall side, up to Ford and Carrie Drive, it's lined up, you know, both ways due to their flagging crews. But it's going to be ongoing and when that happens, they take other routes and they run the alleys and likewise, which has been reported for, for forever, to get down to Main Street and get off of the three twenty-nine sooner, so. That's all I really have, but I said the Main Street there is just a big, big, big improvement. So hopefully they'll come back and whatever it is they're going to do, if this is stage one, it'll be like it should be for years, so. End of report.
Thank you.
Quick question. Did you say you still put the speed bumps out?
No, he didn't. He did that one day.
Okay, I remember that.
And they were taking down that, no, the gentleman who did put them up.
Okay, I misunderstood you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mason?
Um, I would, I am continuing on with the Hometown Heroes Project. I'm trying to still get contacts for that. I'm also looking at the Biology Club for the Butterfly Gardens, as the mayor was talking about. I'm trying to see if they would be interested in maintaining it or volunteering for, to go over. And I'm also just curious about the parade for tomorrow, like where exactly we'd be meeting for that, like time?
Quarter seven.
Here.
Here.
Okay.
We'll hop in the car, go over, get in line and away we go.
And also, what would the dress code be for that?
Casual.
Tied suit.
A tuxedo, yeah.
Dress worn.
Freddie Krueger.
If you want to wear a mask, you may.
Mason, don't pay attention.
I'm also looking forward to, I want to see if I could help with this Christmas tree lighting competition and see what I can do for it. But other than that, I think that's all I have to report.
Well, thank you. Ms. Haldeman?
Thank you. I, I, I've got to chime in on Main Street too, although, you know, it, I've got more questions than that. I'm certainly, to use Brian, our solicitor's words, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but they didn't take the surfacing to the ends of the street. They kind of did a nice job straight down the middle and so I'm concerned in terms of the kind of wear and tear, and I know that's not our responsibility, but I, I guess Leroy, I wanted to kind of confirm, this is just a temporary patch and they're going to be back or you haven't even gotten that level of?
The day that they came to do this work, I didn't know they were coming.
Okay, I, I wondered, yeah, they, they tied up Main Street pretty, pretty nicely for a couple of days.
They handled it as best they could and
They shot you down some.
I, I don't think that will be a concern, that little patch on the end.
You don't?
No.
Okay. I just, I, well, maybe it's just me that drums.
Try to stay more in the middle.
I kind of aim for the sides. That's my problem. Okay, so that's question one. Two, I wanted to just ask again about where we're at with the security camera bids? Not, 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 not any place?
We have a bit of a snafu
Okay.
in that the grant writer does not see himself as the grant administrator, so I am working with Bernadette on that. And with everything else that's going on, it's not, it's not going real quickly, but it's not stand, it's not going backwards.
Okay, all right, because I, I just, that, that is something I don't think we should lose sight of. There's so many, obviously, I think we all agree, there's many areas that need to have that coverage in, in our, in our borough, so. Okay, and then lastly, as Mason said, I, I put a flyer that a friend was kind enough to help me develop last night about our Christmas tree contest, so it's there. I, I think I want to ask if, what confirmation, everybody's in agreement that we can move forward with this if? And then I'm, Mason just volunteered and we are going to accept his volunteerism. He will be on the committee to, to, to select the winner and, and perhaps maybe even help visit some businesses. I think the only question I want to ask, if I may, is in terms of, I, I kind of had identified the business district. To be truthful, I'm not even sure, you know, I kind of always thought that was from Twenty-First down to like Miller's Diner area. But I certainly would not want to take away from anybody who might even be interested, almost from Miller's Diner down to Mario's. So again, I don't know if there's an objection, a thought process to it, if anybody has any ideas or suggestions. The only thing is, I know we really do and I kind of push the timeframes, but once I really started to kind of go backwards into what we needed to do because our tree lighting ceremony, I think Leroy will probably announce next month, but is in, at the end of November. So we've really got to have them out and decorating kind of the whole month of November to be able to be selected as potential winner. So.
Just an area that I would suggest, if I may?
Yes.
Don't, you know, the Cherry Square, I guess they call it, Cherryville Road, even the strip mall there, because they're part of our businesses and I know as part of the chamber, I used to be part of, they'd always questioned our, are we part of Northampton, are we not part of Northampton? I know it's not the Main Street, but yet it's still part of our business district. So I just don't want to isolate anybody and just say it's a designated area. You know, if they don't decide to decorate up there, that's their prerogative. But I still would like to say we should include, as you even said, from Mario's all the way up and obviously, you know, Mario's has been around for.
Right, 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 right.
Encourage.
And I don't know if that's a stay on Main Street, but like Northampton Quinn and Jewelry down in Center Street there, too.
There are businesses down there, I've heard.
Yeah, Tanzos.
Yep.
The State Store.
You realize I have four days next week to get these flyers out there. I'll be giving you, so we, and, and I have a bunch of meetings next week. But, okay, all right, yeah, I take all those suggestions. Absol- absolutely, you're right. Behind, behind there with Tanzos and there's a guitar and there's a hairdresser, yes, okay, yeah, well, points well taken, okay.
I would suggest maybe the mayor, you still sit on the chamber board. You maybe ask them for some of their volunteers to maybe get some of those flyers out because it will also help with our, the Christmas that we do at the Roxy. To have more decorations will make a lot more festivities in the town look stronger. Maybe they could give us some of their volunteer people for half a day or something.
I'll make a call. Thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions. So, so again, does everybody have?
Thank you.
Can I just ask, everybody's in agreement with it, that it's okay to move forward with it? Okay, great, thank you. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Has that been thought of to be placed onto the borough website?
I, I. Where, well.
The little, the little guy behind the camera.
Good, good point. I did not think of that. You're absolutely correct.
That is, that is one of the fastest ways to get it out.
Yeah. I'm, I'm hoping that maybe, I know our, our reporters aren't here tonight, but I'm sort of hoping they might pick up on it too and throw it into, maybe into the news article when they sometimes run them, so maybe I can even, we can talk to Savannah and Bill and see if they can mention it. Okay.
Oh, it's just, if I add to that, it also like through Facebook, you'd be able to share it just to, because it spreads very fast, it's social media, so that would also work. As you were saying, it's like the website.
And this would be something, Mason, that you could entice new people to come in to help with this project, to become part of what you're doing. See, it's, it kind of blends along. Spread the butter.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm done.
Ms. Haldeman?
Thank you. I don't know how important it is, but I noticed this dividend letter that we received is to the attention of Jean Zarekow. So maybe somebody wants to call that bank and let them know Jean Zarekow hasn't been here for many years and update their records.
Check's not made up to him, is it?
And I know this was mentioned in the committee reports about the Celebrate Our Hometown Heroes program that is at the high school on Sunday, November twelfth at two PM. Judging by the banners that we have hanging in our borough, I know a lot of you are really interested in our hometown heroes and coming from a military family, as I do, this is a big piece of my heart. I did attend that celebration last year and it was very overcoming when I heard my dad's name mentioned. There will be four hundred names that are actually mentioned during the celebration, so please come out and celebrate our hometown heroes again on Sunday, November twelfth at two PM at the high school. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you. Uh, October eleventh, the fire department had an open house, it was well attended by a lot of people. They put on a bunch of nice demonstrations along with the police with the canine. Uh, I'd like to thank the code enforcement for moving the bush that was in the middle of the sidewalk on Seventeenth Street when I walked my dogs. And I'd like to thank Public Works for removing the puddle down on, on the D and L trail. I seen that was, when was that fixed, Leroy, yesterday?
Um, I don't.
I think.
I don't know. We called in the lights that you gave us, so I'm waiting on.
Somebody put a nice patch in there and got rid of the pond that's down by the baseball field. And one more question I have about the cameras. What will you eventually get? Who's going to monitor them?
Each would have their own DVR. There would be a, probably a live feed to the police station, but that is not always staffed.
Yeah.
Uh, but the, the DVRs would be what would be used in case of vandalism.
Okay. That is the end of my report then.
Thank you, Mr. Glassik.
Yes, I have a few things. The Veterans Day is actually on the eleventh and I know we said the twelfth for the festivities at the high school. Is there anything in the town that we're doing for Veterans Day? Is there any kind of memorial service or anything anywhere that we do?
Uh, the Joint Veterans Organization usually has something at the memorial lot at Fourteenth and Washington.
Right, I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you.
I haven't been alerted to it yet, but
If you could.
I always make my way down there around eleven o'clock. That's usually when it happens.
Okay. I mean, I'm still throwing back in my chair, Mr. Lipsansky, thank you for bringing up about a website. I can't believe it came out from you, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm in.
We're all, we're all on that. I'm really glad. So I'm still thinking about that, so we could also put that on our website, so. How, how progress we've made.
Yes.
Thank you. We did have a lot of checks come in, Leroy. Do they go, are they designated in the budget for things like that? Or you have really no idea when we get these checks that came in? The one was for forty thousand, the other one was for fifteen.
It's difficult a year in advance to determine what we're going to be getting from a previous five-year.
Okay, so it's an actuary for four to five years and rolling numbers.
We usually go middle of the road. What I, what I normally do is whatever we get this year, I'll budget for next year. And that doesn't, hardly ever pans out, but I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, it's hard to figure that out, you know, it's for three to five-year actuary, so that's fine. I want to thank Pat for the great work with the farmer's market again. It was a lot of work she puts in there. I got down there several times during the year. I know we want to try to help build that. We met in the beginning of the year. We're working harder to make our farmer's market even more attending for people, but she puts a lot of time and effort into that, so I want to thank her out here on the public viewing also. Uh, I did notice on the bills that the PPL bill for this month is, hopefully it would be correct and it's only this, but for three hundred and forty-seven dollars or three hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the month, or is that for just a two-week period?
Two-week period.
Okay.
It's the way the bills come in.
That's still pretty nice, but obviously there's another one coming in because there's only one. And if that was the case, I would think we'd be putting these lights all over the place. But we did check on the lights. We're still waiting for an answer for what the total was, the light bill for the last.
Yeah, I.
You didn't get that?
We, we have run into a brick wall with the, you know, the contact that we have been provided, PPL business link or something. And we, Brian has sent emails to them repeatedly and we have received nothing in return.
Well, the person I called today about the sidewalk on Five Eighty-One Street, he picked up right away and he gave me a person, he said he's going to get back to me with a work order number for that sidewalk. That was eighteen months. Now I checked with my neighbor. He said for eighteen months that they still did not replace a sidewalk that they ripped up. He said was un. he said was unacceptable, so he took that another level up, and I'll reach out to him again. His name is Chris, I have his direct phone number.
Have him call the office and get in touch with Brian. It'd be nice to have a, a, a person to deal with instead of cyberspace.
Yep, I don't wanna put it out over the air, but I'll give it to Brian after this. Um, I always bring this up, I know you talk about shred events a lot of times. I think people have shredders in their home. I still think people like to use their shred events, but what about electronic recycling event? I know it costs us money, I know, but Allen Township can have it, East Allen Township has had it. People have to realize you're gonna pay thirty or forty dollars for a larger TV or for some computers, but it's a way that, instead of sitting in our alleys after the holidays and seeing them sit around, 'cause you just do see more TVs, more computers, screens and stuff sitting in alleys. I think we even had an issue where they were getting smashed around a couple times. So, I would really like to look into electronic recycling event in the new year.
I will, uh, in the budget preparation under sanitation page, I will put a line in there for a electronic recycling.
Just get a cost number.
Yeah, I will, and I'll put that in, and the people will have to pay. We could probably, uh, have it at the same place, uh, we have the shredding event up in the community center parking lot.
But it gives our, it gives our community a chance to get rid of some of these large TVs and electronics that they at least know that they're gonna be taken there and they have to pay something small. But prices out there, if you have to run to Allentown or something like that, are crazy, so hopefully, we can help our residents a little bit more with that. Who's responsible for the trail that's through the Northampton area for maintenance on it? The D and L, not the D and L, it wouldn't be the Northampton?
Uh, we help out when we can, but if it's something major, it's, uh, you know, Delaware Lea Valley Heritage.
Well, it's not so much, it's more than the leaves, because it's, it's just like, and I know you're, it's really hard, because it's all covered with trees around there, but it seems like the entrance coming off of, um, Northampton Street, or not Northampton Street, but the, the enter, entrance in from East Allen Township in the back there. Uh, where was the
Oh, that's the county.
The county part of the trail?
Yeah, the Norbat Trail is, is, is the county. We take care of it within the borough of Northampton. But it comes in from East Allen and comes in to Allent township.
Well, it is, it's definitely in Northampton, because the sign says Welcome to Northampton. So, when you come down there, it's right, right by the old Atlas Cement entrance.
I'll have, I'll have Greg look at it.
Yeah, I think if we can go, just once in a while, get a blower through there, clean it up, because the entrance has just been blocked with tons of debris and stuff in there. And that is the end of my questions and reports, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsansky.
Thank you, Madam President. I am sitting here enjoying the feeling of pride in the participation of my communicants with the, uh, rest of the council members. They've seemed to brought up everything that I was gonna talk about. So, in the interest of that, I yield back the balance of my time to the chair.
It's definitely a snow.
Seriously.
He talked about the website, he talked about no comments.
Take his time.
We didn't have the bathrooms, the stainless steel bathrooms that we can provide for other people. You wear a shirt like that every time, that would be good.
Don't tell me to cackle, okay?
Wow.
Wow, without them, thought it was pretty much fun. Announcements by Mr. [inaudible].
I only have one. Uh, we were contacted by Senator Nick Miller's office, and they are desirous of placing a food drop-off, uh, container in the lobby of the Recreation Center to provide for Thanksgiving sharing for those people less fortunate. I took it upon myself to, uh, give him permission, so that if you go into the lobby and you see it there, take a couple of cans of Spam along, throw them in. And I'll steal them when I get a chance, uh, but I, I think this is a good outreach and, and, uh...
Another article bound to the age.
Yeah, we can get it on there. That's all I have.
That's all?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Would we be able to take care of the financial expenses of the last appropriations that have cleared the board?
Thank you. May I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Holman? Question?
Yes.
Wait, wait, I gotta get my sheet.
Sorry, I'm filling in for you, Tony.
Go get them.
The Allstate Septic Systems, these pumping stations that are fifteen thousand dollars, are these all repairs?
No, this is, uh, Scott doesn't have anywhere to go with his sludge, so we have to liquid haul some of these things out. We're getting so many solids in right now, that he does not have room to store the sludge to process.
So, we wouldn't classify it under the same, I thought the sludge was very low, so I was gonna report on that.
Yeah.
And this fifteen thousand added to that.
It's the same account, same account line.
Okay.
Eight four twenty, eight four twenty-nine, three thousand five.
Alright. Um, what's the Long and Gulf Supply Company, a radiator for forty-three hundred dollars?
We ordered that in April, and that's for the large Jacobson, uh, lawn tractor. They, they just now delivered it.
In April?
In April. And it's cold.
Alright, um, Waste Management, where are we using UGI, where do we have gas from UGI builds that we're using for, for what?
Uh, we have gas just about in all of our facilities.
Okay, 'cause I noticed that was the first time I seen that number was ticked up pretty good, but it makes sense with the heating and things in the colder weather. That's the end of my questions.
Any questions?
I want to add to Mr. Blasick. This, uh, with the sludge and everything else in the, and, and the water, anything that's going in. With the lining and stuff of the manholes up, did we notice a, a decrease, or did those numbers change? Is that a project done, or are they still working on that? And if it is done, and the expense that was in there, did we notice a change in the cost?
We have less infiltration along Canal Street, yes.
I, I know that was one of the major areas.
And we, we went out for a grant for two million dollars to re-line the line on Canal Street. That is still being reviewed. It was supposed to be
So, that was
determined by September, but that's gone already.
Right.
Uh, the, most of the, the solids, other than what people flushed on their toilets, are coming from the water company.
Any other questions? Is that it?
That's it?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it sounds silly, but I'm just interested. So, is there like a boot allowance for any of the, the workers here?
Yes.
Okay, um, one pair of boots here is three hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents, and the other pair is a hundred ninety-nine?
They can accrue up to six hundred dollars. And they
Once a year?
No, that's over, over two years. They, which one is it, where?
Aaron Borts and Greg Maury.
Oh, yeah, that, we don't, we don't place a limit on what kind of shoes they buy. We provide the money, they buy the shoes.
Okay, I, I was just asking if there's a boot allowance.
No, they're, I keep tabs on that. When somebody needs, wants to go get a pair of shoes, they ask how much they have in their account, I tell them, and they stay within that limit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
May I, Mr. Hall, may I get a second?
Second.
Who took it?
Ms. Holman. Ms. Holman?
Holman? Okay, question? No question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
You did good, you did good.